All right, we'd like to welcome everybody to Saratoga Springs Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, December 14th, 6:30 PM, and we'd like to take a roll call if we could, after we do pledge allegiance. Commissioner Steele, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start the roll call. Commissioner Steele.
Sandra Steele.
Brianna Brush.
Kirk Wilkins.
Ken Kilgore.
And the city staff.
Gordon Minor.
Nora Shepherd.
David Stroud.
All right, and we do have a quorum. This is a public meeting. We've set aside some time for anybody who has any thoughts, ideas, concerns to come forward that, for items that are not on the agenda, please come forward and limit your comments to about three minutes. All right, since we don't have any, we will close public input at this time. We'll move right along to item number four. This is a business item. Approval of Planning Commission regular meeting schedule for 2018. Has everybody seen the schedule? Yep? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the, or the approval, I move that we approve the Planning Commission regular meeting schedule for 2018.
We have a motion from Commissioner Steele. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. Let's move on to item number five, and this is going quickly. Public hearing. This is a preliminary plat for University of Utah Medical Center Phase One located at 337 West Medical Drive. Travis Perry is the applicant, and this will be presented by Nora Shepherd, our senior planner. If we, if the applicant would like to come and join us at this time, we, please, please come forward. We'll ask you for your name once, once the presentation has been completed.
The presentation will be very brief. In your staff report, there's, most of the staff report is just background information about where this came from. The request is for the first preliminary plat for the University of Utah Medical Center campus, and it's all part of the city center district area plan that was approved back in 2010. And then the last year or so, last year, you reviewed the community plan and the village plan for this area submitted by the University of Utah, and those were both approved on April 18th, 2017. So what this plat does, and it's, you probably all know where it's located, it's on Medical Drive off of, here, this is a little location map. This shows the area, the lot being created, basically, as a part of this plat. So what this plat does is it creates the roadway and the parcel. It does not approve any kind of development, and they will have to come in for site plan approval before they're allowed to put any buildings on it. And that's the point in time where we really look at things like architecture and landscaping and all the side improvements. This plat just merely creates the road and the lot. And here's a picture of the plat. It's fairly straightforward. It's in your packet as well. Staff recommends approval of this, and, and both engineering and planning have taken a look at this plat. There, we've had a little bit of back and forth. I would recommend that you forward a positive, well, you forward a positive recommendation to the city council. They are the final decision makers, and they will hold a, a meeting as well. You hold a public hearing, the city council does not. But I would request that you eliminate condition number two that has to do with the landscaping. And the reason that I'm suggesting that is because the only piece of landscaping that they're showing is, is basically just a strip that goes down the roadway, and in their community plan, it shows that being simply some trees and then some gravel. And in some of the interior landscaping, it actually, in the community plan and village plan, it shows some additional landscaping in some of the parking islands and internal to the project. But the plan that they actually presented as a part of this plat is consistent with the community and village plan. So I would ask that you strike that condition of approval and that you forward a recommendation to the city council. Included and attached to your staff report is a staff report from Gordon Minor, that city engineer. And again, there're just, there're some little things that need to be, Ts that need to be crossed and Is that need to be dotted, but we feel that the application is ready for your recommendation.
Thank you. The applicants, would you like to introduce yourself, your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Greg Hawes from Solmas. I'm not Travis Perry. Travis couldn't be here tonight. 4179 South Riverboat Road.
Thank you, Greg. Did you want to add anything to the presentation tonight?
Nothing.
Okay.
We really appreciate staff working with this.
Perfect. So this is a public meeting for item number five. We'd like to open up public comment at this time for this item. Okay, we do not have any public comment. We will close public comment on item number five, and we'll turn it over to the Planning Commission for comment.
I guess it wouldn't be me if I didn't ask, Greg, what kind of trees you're going to put in the strip there?
I don't even recall, so I apologize. I'm not prepared to answer that question, but the trees will comply with the, with the list that's provided in the community plan.
Then not locusts or hackberry then? Because he likes one of them.
Yeah. No, they won't be either one of those.
Thank you. That's it.
How long are your comments?
I have a few.
Okay.
Since this is administrative action, which just means that you just have to make sure that everything complies as far as what you, what is currently available, and so just wondering if the applicant has any issues regarding the staff's conditions for approval, knowing that the, the condition number two has been eliminated, and if, and if you're, have no problems with those conditions?
None.
Okay. On the vicinity map that you have in the packet, it's on, yeah, the little map, you've marked the river as Provo River.
Oh, isn't that amazing?
Yeah, I think that should be Jordan.
Yeah, we use this template all the time. So I guess we should look at it.
At first I thought the scale was way off, and this is Provo, yeah.
We wish it had that water quality.
The Jordan River has Provo River envy.
We will certainly make a note of that. Thank you. We're always looking for.
There was a, a question too. Under the plat notes number five, it says that building permits aren't issued until improvements are installed and fees paid. I thought it was a certificate of occupancy, but is it, is it building permits? It's usually not issued until everything's been installed and fees paid. So in the same page as the map, under plat, plat note number five, it says building permits aren't issued until all fees are paid and permits, and all improvements are made, or installed. But I thought it was a certificate of occupancy that's not issued, so I might just.
It's, it's building permits for many of the fees, and either the improvements have to be installed or bonded for.
Okay.
And the building permit, you know, sometimes the building official will let some things slide to certificate of occupancy, but.
But generally it's building permit? Okay, all right. And then, oh, that's it actually, for me.
Okay, there wasn't a lot to go on, on this packet. There wasn't a lot of information provided. It was, it's a nice-looking rectangle.
Thank you.
So, I don't have any further comments. We're glad to see that a hospital's coming in, but I would, I know this isn't, doesn't have much to do with the decision we're having tonight, but I did want to know, the hospital itself, what kind of services are you going to provide? I figured I wasn't the only one who was curious about this.
So my name's Jonathan Bates. I'm the Executive Director of State Administration for the University of Utah. For the record, my address is 505 Wacara Way, Salt Lake City, Utah. At this time, we do not have a clear outline of the services that we will provide in this facility. We are planning for a multi-specialty ambulatory clinic facility with primary care and specialty care services. Beyond that scope of detail, we have not identified additional services at this time.
Do you have any idea how many floors this is going to be?
Our typical construction in a location like this would match what we've done in Farmington or in South Jordan, and those facilities are two to three stories in height.
Yeah, those are large. It'd be nice, we use the hospital much at the University of Utah up there, so it'd be nice to have something closer to home. So it's welcome. All right, I will entertain a motion unless you have any other questions. No? Okay.
Okay, I move to forward a positive recommendation to the city council on the University of Utah Phase One preliminary plat as outlined in Exhibit One with the findings and conditions below, with the exception that we would take out a condition number two completely.
We have a motion from Commissioner Steele. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Commissioner Kilgore. All in, any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to see the, the minutes from November 9th and November 28th? Have a good night.
Good night. Yeah, the, the, the Planning Commission minutes, the page numbering is off. I don't know if you noticed, it said one of one, two of two, three of three, and four of four.
For November 9?
Yeah, the, yeah, the city, the, not, not, yeah, the one that, the joint one, I guess. That's what I meant.
Oh.
Or, wait, which one is it? Page 12, sorry, page 12, so, in the packet.
So one of those labels is correct. The first three might need a little.
It's, it's the Planning Commission meeting. Yeah. Just so you, yeah, just so it's not, just wanted to make the record.
Any other, any other changes that have not been communicated?
Well, I keep, I keep wondering why I have January the 26th of 2017 on two of two of the minutes for.
Oh, yeah, the date down there. The date at the bottom of page two of two.
Oh, that I didn't notice.
Is January 26th.
That is for the minutes.
For the 9th.
Actually, it's just the first page that's wrong, or that says November 9th on it.
First page says November 9th.
Yeah.
Second page says January 26th. Okay, and then the signature page is also incorrect.
All, all, well, two of two and three, two of three and three of three, and the signature page all have the wrong date at the bottom. On November the 9th?
Right. We make those quick changes before we sign them, so. Any other changes? All right, I'll entertain a motion, and I think we'll have to have two motions.
I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on November 9th, 2017, and the work session, joint work session minutes of November 28th, 2017.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a question on the motion? We have a second. Do we have a question? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion's pass unanimously for item number six. This is going to be the fastest meeting ever. Item number seven, reports of action.
Should we slow it down?
Only if you have tickets to Star Wars.
I don't, sorry.
Oh, no, I don't either.
No reports at this time.
Okay. Any commission comments?
I have a question. I know we're trying to get out of here, but I have a question for Oakwood Homes, the, from the joint session. One thing nobody asked, and I thought of afterwards, is the price range on their homes. Can we figure that out or ask them that?
We can get back to you with that. I mean, we have an idea because we've sat down and touched on, but they, they try to hit a variety of different price points.
I was just curious.
Yeah, and the different products, obviously, are slightly different. They're, multi-family are relatively affordable.
Yeah, you know, they're going from, yeah, townhomes up to large, single families, so.
So it'll be a wide range.
If I just had to estimate, you know, your townhomes, your market for a townhome is probably in the 250s maximum for, for a townhome, yeah. And so all the way up to probably, I'm just guessing here, 400 to 500 on some of the houses.
If you haven't noticed, market values have gone up in the last month, almost $20,000.
Really?
Really.
Even more.
Yeah, they're going up, so.
Don't let the county assessor know that.
Time, you guys, by the time they build, they're going to be higher anyway, so.
Yeah, and actually, I also had it written down, but forgot to ask, because I, but I think it was discussed anyway, but I don't remember. Was, are the types of homes, especially the multi-family type of homes, or high-density homes, the number of, the number that they're anticipating, has that been worked out with Prop 6?
Haven't gotten any that far.
Yeah, you got to do a lot of math with that, don't we?
Yeah, and I think that they will, based upon the joint work session, they'll come back with.
Okay. Is that, is, you know, reconciling with Prop 6, is that something the city's supposed to do, or is that something that we, we put onto the developer to, to do?
I think we both consciously need to look at that.
What's that?
Both parties need to consciously look at that.
Okay. Yeah, because I just wonder, I mean, if these guys are based in Salt Lake County or something, they may not even know that we have a Prop 6.
Well, it doesn't have teeth really against people who have land property rights already, and they probably have right, more rights than what they're submitting anyway, which has been the case for many of these.
Yeah, but didn't Prop 6 actually stop the development that was going to happen in that, in that development?
On the golf course?
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was the whole point of Prop 6.
They went, they changed.
That was a, that was a separate negotiation.
That was, yeah, that was Proposition 3 that referred that ordinance, but the city, one of the issues that we had was whether or not the ordinance was even necessary for the townhomes to allow approval of those townhomes. But that was a vol, that was really a voluntary decision of, of the developer in negotiations with, with us. And honestly, none of that really, that's kind of what started this whole high-density issue in Proposition 6, but the end result really had no, no effect on, on that, that particular project that you're referring to, the townhomes on plat 17, SSD.
I was, I was, yeah, my family was in Japan during that time, then, five years, and then when we, we came back, the neighbors all told us that that's what was the effect, and so I hadn't really looked into it, but.
They didn't really have the teeth.
I think they're.
It's, it's hard to really say, but it worked out well for the developer in the end, because by the time he got ready to record that plat, values had gone up and made some pretty good money off of it. So, I mean, it was a financial decision for him at the time. When he was penciling it out, the townhomes, obviously that was, that was the thing that was approved under the development agreement. But as he penciled it out, he realized that it was going to be more profitable to do the, the single-family homes. But yeah, I would say that it had an effect on it for sure. But there was nothing in Prop 3 or Prop 6 that was going to stop townhomes from going in on plat 17.
We, we can request from time to time to know where we are as far as density, so we'd like to know that. If you could, you know, find some of that out, do some of the math, and see where we are today, that'd be great.
Weren't those propositions tied to the general plan, which is advisory only?
Yes.
Yes, so, that's, that is true. But as you look at, at rezon applications, the general plan is very pertinent to that, that discussion. It's not, it's not binding, but it is an advisory tool.
It probably has the most effect when we're doing legislative decisions or zone changes for people don't, that don't currently have land rights. But for people who have already had, had rights, it has no effect on them.
Well, we, that's the position that we took, yes. So can, can, and that's always the interesting thing, can residents file an initiative or referendum that takes away vested rights and then force the development, or force the city to, to pay fair compensation for that taking of property? And the answer is prob, they probably can.
But it'll cost, yeah.
And that could be a huge cost to the city, and then we'd have to put it back on, on the residents. We'd have to, basically, if, if that taking resulted in a judgment that the city couldn't pay out of its general fund right now, and insurance, insurance never covers a takings claim, what we'd have to do, we have to then make an assessment on the residents to pay for that. And that, that has happened with large monetary judgments against cities and counties. So I don't think they realize that, that they're going to have to end up paying for that, that taking of property.
If that's the route, they want to go.
If that's what happens, yeah, if that's the result.
Is the power to do referendum initiatives, is that, is that by state? Is that, how, is it by county?
It's by, it's by state.
State.
Yeah, the state constitution.
Good questions.
A heads up to, your next agenda's going to be. We have a whole slew of liberty plats coming in.
That's a good segue.
No one's going to hear it sometime.
Your Diet Coke or whatever.
For our record.
We'll, we'll turn it over for, oh, sorry, did you have other comments?
Yes, I have one for you.
Sure.
I know, you must not.
Oh, you're on.
You, you must not have been here when the U of U Medical Center came through the first time.
I was.
Well, it's not going to be a hospital.
What is it, more of a clinic?
It's like Daybreak, which is the one in, in South Jordan, and it will have ambulatory services and specialty doctor's services.
Didn't they say no overnight stays? I thought they said.
No overnight stays.
Yeah.
It's not a true hospital.
So that's not considered a hospital then, in that case, I guess?
And then I can have specialties either, so.
And they said maybe in the future they'll have helicopter, right? In the, in the future, I thought they said.
There'll be some of the specialties that will.
Well, they did say it was something similar to South Jordan. South Jordan's big.
But it's not a hospital.
Right.
Unfortunately.
They have labor and delivery, they have.
If the state taxes, or if we get to tax differently.
They have a lot of facilities there. They have surgery, anyway.
They surgery.
All right. Director's report.
Just a couple things. So this last year, 2017, the city went through a significant code amendment process earlier in the year. We did the general plan. This year, it looks like we're probably going to queue up the Trails Master Plan, which has been several years since it's really been looked at. We got some conflicting, or conflicting parts between the general plan and what our, our street specs or engineering specs call out for, so we want to bring everything in line, put that together. So that's probably going to be the big, big project this year is to amend that plan. Also, I had something else, I just forgot.
I'm going to ask a question while you're thinking about it. So we, we also passed like a bike plan for the city. Has that affected any of the construction on Redwood Road as we're going along? I mean, have they, since, the, the whole idea was that, once we put this bike plan in place, as the, as DOT comes into, or UDOT, sorry, comes in to do the roads, that they'll conform to the bike plan that we have. Has that affected any of the bike plan as they've been doing Redwood Road improvements?
I don't believe it's negatively affected, and hopefully they're following that plan.
Are they adding bike lanes in there?
I don't.
Yeah, they are on, in some of the widening.
I think UDOT is doing some of the work, and then as properties develop, we require the developers to do it, but definitely having, I mean, the bike, both the Parks, Rec and Trails Plan and the Bike Ped Plan call for trails along Redwood Road, so I think they're kind of consistent in that.
I just wanted to know if it actually had teeth, or we went through that whole exercise for nothing.
I think it does.
You know, because.
Yeah, we refer to it.
Okay, I would like to do more than refer to it. I'd like to.
We look at it when we're reviewing plats.
If we plan it, let's build it, you know?
Are you getting the updates from Red, from UDOT on Redwood Road?
I, I don't know.
I got one this afternoon.
They're also on the city's Facebook page, if you, as well.
And it tells about when, you know, they're working on the bike lanes and between such and such and such and such, and gives some good information.
I don't, I don't know that I'm getting that, so. Check your email, see if I've copied. That'd be good. Otherwise.
It's just from UDOT.
Okay, no, I'm not getting those, so I would like them. So I'll talk to you afterwards.
I'll forward it to you.
UDOT updates to our city, is that what you're saying?
UDOT's, uh, updates to what's happening on our roads, when they're going to be open, which we're supposed to have five lanes.
I usually go to their website for that.
The city posted on our Facebook page too, so if you follow it there.
I know David, David had an announcement from UDOT today about opening of the, so I think it's December 23rd or 4th, 24th, right before Christmas.
22nd.
Christmas present.
Present for all of us.
So it's, so I guess, it, that came as news to me, I guess all that's left is the striping now. I thought they were going to do that one section, and it looks like they're ripping up, but.
They're doing a lot of drainage, it seems.
Guess they're going to leave that for now.
I remember now.
Ah, I knew you'd. Turn off my mic.
To tie this into the, the long-term plan, obviously what we'd like to do. Planning Commission's opinion, okay, we got a new year coming up. Anything you, you'd like us to look at that, some items out there, something we could put on our, our agenda here to, to address for you, or just any ideas, things that concern you, any code things you're like, well, that doesn't seem right, or, you know, basically just, any thoughts and ideas?
So if we want something like a cemetery, how do we do that?
You go by land.
It's private, right? So there's probably nothing we can really do.
Yeah, yeah, you could have a city cemetery, you probably have to have it large enough. You have to hire Sexton, you have to hire, you know, other staff to do that. At some point, maybe the city would get large enough for that, but right now, it'd probably just be a private, private cemetery. Although, I own Spanish Fork, and they have a city cemetery, and Spanish Fork's about the size of Saratoga.
Yeah.
I mean, think about it, you know, it's probably used, that will never go away.
The city has one as well that's managed by their Parks and Recreation Department.
Well, I'm sure the older cities had to.
Warren has a city cemetery. Provo has a city cemetery.
What's that?
Several cities have their own cemetery.
Yeah, I'm guessing a lot of older cities do, because there was just nowhere else for people to go to bury their dead, you know, nearby. Whereas our new cities like ours, we could, we could be anywhere, and plus, everybody's in a transplant right now.
Plus, we need to find a spot that's not wet, and one that you don't have to blast to get into the ground.
Yeah, that's, that's tough, frankly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, the, the, obviously, if it would be a city, the city would have to go through that process, but I would, you know, a private entity can come in and, and open up a private cemetery.
Who would that be?
Is there anything, yeah, right? How would you incent someone to come in to build a cemetery?
You know, people have to look at it, you, if you think about it, cemetery, I mean, there's always a use, there's always a need for it, you know, someone comes, that's a long-term investment. I'm trying to think, my wife and I looked into it, not that we're planning on leaving soon, but I think the Spanish Fork, where we live, residents are charged, I want to say $600 to $800, that's a resident fee.
For a plot?
Yeah.
What's the zoning does? Is it industrial or is it commercial?
Every, every city's going to be different on that.
In our city.
Do we even have a zoning right now, or?
Yes, we do, but I can't remember.
Do we have cemetery in the chart?
Institutional.
I'm not sure.
Kimberly talking about starting to think about the need for a cemetery, but I don't know.
I got death threats in California for proposing a cemetery in a new city, very much like ours.
Yeah. If you got the death threats, where are they gonna put you?
I had the police backing me up that night.
They're telling you that you're gonna be the first customer?
Uh-huh, that's what they were doing.
Well, they always say people are dying to get in, so.
I hear it's good business.
Yeah, I mean, you think if you're a private cemetery, that's kind of a long-term investment, I mean.
Think about the price they charge for a plot.
Yeah.
And what's the price per acre, so.
And the maintenance is essentially.
I do have one thing, I didn't, I don't know if you got my email or not, you heard some of the council and you've heard me say it several times, that when a house backs up to a main street, it needs to have, I hate to say two-sided architecture, but that's really what we're asking for. We don't have anything in the code, so I always have to say, I'm going to ask very nicely, and is there a way we could not have to say, it's not in our code, but would you do it anyway?
What is that? You cited architecture.
Well, so.
Basically, yeah, basically having a plane back, it's dressed up a bit, cause if you're on a main road, if like.
Oh, we talked about this last week.
I'll, we'll use D.R. Horton as an example, that was the first thing, I think, the first day I was here, second anyone driving, driving down Redwood Road, seeing the backs of the homes.
You don't like looking into my yard?
Can't see the yard, I can see the house. But it's just, it's just stucco, and so that, you know, dressed up a bit, you know, different materials, things like that, maybe some.
Shutters.
On residential housing, are there any examples in Utah County where they've done two-sided architecture, other than pop, other than pop-outs? Cause I know people, I know builders will put pop-outs sometimes on a rear window. Never seen shutters or.
My experience is most cities don't regulate residential architecture.
We have done some where they've, we've required some stone on the side of the wall going all the way back and.
Not on the very back, and when you're driving along a large development and it's plain back after plain back after plain back, it gets monotonous. And you heard me say, I got called on the carpet by a friend of mine.
We're trying to, in the community planners, we're trying to catch that, when we have that ability, but it's a good, it's a good idea certainly to be more specific about it in the code.
Well, in my community, the, my development, the early phases, they even put, there'd be three sides of stucco and then the back would be vinyl siding, you know, which backs up against the road. So, I mean, developers went out of their way not to put anything on the back, you know, so.
That, yeah, that saves lots of money.
Yeah, I understand it, but that's why I was just wondering, how do you, yeah, it's a good point, though.
Not noted here.
I have a thought, just in, with the desire to make it, you know, nicer to live here and not have neigh, there's some, there's a lot of neighbor tension that I've noticed as I've been here in certain neighborhoods. And a lot of people call, you know, maybe for code enforcement that is really not against code, or they're calling for this or that, and really it comes out to be just, you know, a waste of the, of the people's time. Is there anything in our code in our city that says, hey, if you're crying wolf and it's not right, you know, maybe there's some kind of, something that says, you know, you're crying wolf and there's really, you're not substantiated, you don't know the code, you haven't.
Yeah, we don't have anything like that, that's the issue, most people don't know the codes, they see something that doesn't look right to them.
Yeah.
So they call a city, so basically they want us to go verify, and sometimes it is a violation.
If there's someone using that, then what? Do we have anything that's to protect?
I guess if there's a way to track, well, even that, I don't think they, we can do anything legally to prevent somebody from expressing, hey, I think something's wrong here, and Kevin can.
There's some criminal laws in the state, state code that would discuss that, false information to a peace officer and obstruction of justice, if it got egregious enough, we could look at charging something. But we don't, we don't.
Is it followed for harassment?
Or nuisance?
Uh, you know, there are definitely civil claims that they can, they can bring, we wouldn't give any advice about that.
That would be personal.
Does someone keep reporting you for something?
What's that?
Does someone keep reporting you for something?
No, I'm not saying this is for me personally, I've seen it in our neighborhood for several people.
Yeah.
And people have moved out of the neighborhood and they said, I don't wanna be part of this because, you know, they just keep.
See, and you can also look at, sometimes there could be technically a zoning violation, but a lot of times it could be in the development CC and ours, which the city doesn't enforce, that's up to the HOA to take care of some of those things, so sometimes you get one or the other.
So I'm not talking about if they're actually violating the code, I'm talking about if they're not violating the code and they're living their life right and they're doing the right things and they're having someone complain, you know, they shouldn't be complaining that much and it's just becoming a harassment or whatever, is there any kind of recourse for people like that?
My experience was that, what I would do would just, I'd tell the complainant, hey, there's no issue here, what they're doing is totally within the code. Nine times out of ten, that stops it. But you always get somebody that just always wants to look for something and, you know, keep doing it. We have to go with Kevin's route, though, if it gets bad enough. Hey, I'm quiet.
And, no, it's, this is your time, this is Director's report.
Yeah, I'm getting any ideas from you guys.
Well, you know, maybe what we ought to do is, we take this, maybe you can send an email out to all the planning commissioners and give us some time to think about it and we'll, we'll look at it in the next meeting. Give us some time to think about it and come back to you.
There's another place in our code where it says parking regulations by zone, it's been there forever, it should be by use.
Yeah, and as a matter of discussion, I prefer the actual by zone, cause you could have multiple, this is one thing I don't like in the code, you could have multiple uses in a commercial zone, that their parking numbers are vastly different.
Right.
And I've researched parking numbers over the years, most cities do it by, by zone, not by use.
I've not run into that.
Yeah, it's much easier, I think, to do it by zone, where most commercial uses are four per thousand, five per thousand, higher end than five per thousand. You know, say you get like a call center or something, that could be a permitted use in a commercial zone, but call centers could employ, you know, 150 people at a time, where if you had a store there, you know, your demand for parking would be much less.
You're giving me the argument for use rather than zone.
Well, it would be in the same zone, though, it'd be just a general commercial, yes, true, there are different uses or different numbers.
Restaurants.
Yes, restaurants are generally done by seats, by an occupancy number, like one stall per four seats or whatever that may be.
But they're in the commercial zone.
Right.
How do you, I mean, you can take a look at it and you'll see.
There would be some uses you wouldn't want probably to have special parking like a restaurant, okay, your restaurants are gonna be in commercial zones, it makes more sense for a restaurant to have by a seat or, you know, auto type uses, you know, repair places, they store cars outside, cars that need to be repaired are generally kept outside, they don't keep them inside of a building, and so there's a parking demand that's a little different for that, so you could have some certain use that would call out some special numbers, a call center could have a special, special number.
That's basically what we've been doing by use rather than by zone, because things can go in different zones, like offices can go in three or four zones, and sometimes they take a higher parking ratio than, say, a dress shop would.
Most offices and commercial uses around, like going back to my research I've done in the past, are typically about the same parking numbers, although in offices, you'll pull out like common areas, things like that, but then you just calculate the parking based on the leasable area.
Sorry, I brought that up.
There's an example, you got the auto body, right? They have a different parking regulation than what is right adjacent to them, which is the storage. Storage has two parking spaces.
Yeah, storage doesn't need.
The whole auto body place has a lot more, and then they do park inside, so.
There are some uses that, that demand their own parking number, but you talk about general retail, general commercial, those can pretty much all be done under a general, you know, four, five per thousand, whatever the, that's about the high and low of numbers, maybe, you know, three hundred, you know, three per thousand.
And we do do it for use, because like if you had a neighborhood market, that has a different parking regulation than some of the other business uses.
Right.
In the same.
Every place I've worked, and I've worked in California and in Idaho and Oregon, all of those have been by use rather than zone, and I see, your cohort tonight's going like this, so I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I would like it by zone.
Is it?
But for several reasons, because medical offices take.
Different.
Five per thousand.
Mm-hmm.
If you've got an attorney's office, it's four per thousand. So it's just the medical, dental, all of that. And so, and you can put offices in commercial, you can put them in neighborhood, regional commercial, neighborhood commercial, office, business office, and I think in light industrial even, office warehouse, so.
Are we treated car wash differently?
Yeah.
They have cars going.
Yeah, one of the problems you can run into is, say you get a site that's approved and it needs just a low parking number, because the use of the code says this use only requires 10 stalls, they go out of business in a year, and you got a building, someone comes in and says, oh, that'd be a perfect spot for me, but I can't park, it's in a commercial zone, I'm a commercial use, but I can't park it now because there's only 10 stalls. Yeah, you're always, there's always gonna be a case where something's gonna throw it off, you know, you're never gonna have a universal, this fits everything, but I think having more broad parking numbers, like the four per thousand, five per thousand, opens it up better where a lot of, lot of uses then can come in and out and don't have a problem.
We have been known to tell office users, when they've come in, if you don't park at five per thousand, then you're not going to be able to have any medical offices, and.
We have said that. We also said that this auto plate thing, the auto body, for example, if they change their use, they're not gonna have enough parking for an office space, for example, if they wanted to change that, and they, we accepted that.
Yeah, just in my past experience, you know, rehashing Orem for 15 years, most of our commercial, most of our office was four per thousand, and I only know of one development that parking's become a problem.
Oh, I can point the several around here that are problems, that didn't get parked at high enough.
You mean, Mexican food?
Mexican food and a workout place.
And actually that problem area, they actually got a parking reduction, so they got less than four per thousand, was really what kinda caused the problem.
And another floor of parking.
Yep.
And a parking garage.
But, anyway, I just wondered.
Hey, we can, we can do a little parking study, see what's there, I mean.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I think you misunderstood what I was saying, it's the verbiage at the end, and it, when you're looking at it, if you are a developer coming in, it says parking by zone, and it's the, the table, and it sends you to the table. It should be parking by use rather than.
That's what the table is.
That's what the table is, and that's, that was my concern, not that we are parking, not parking correctly, because we spent a long, a lot of time on determining what uses take what parking, and so I'd hate to lose that, we've spent a lot of time on it.
Actually, I have one also, do cities, what, okay, what am I trying to say? My wife owns a candy store, it's small, and it's in Orem, and because her partner lived in Provo, and so it was a middle place, now she's thinking, okay, her partner's gone, she's now sole owner, she's thought about maybe moving it closer to home, here, but there really isn't a place where she could, she's in a strip mall, you know, it's just next to a couple, like a spa and a, play against sports type of place, and I'm just wondering, what, do cities our size do things like economic development zones where, you know, we kinda create a, we encourage like a bunch of offices that are empty, maybe it's only like three or four or five, and then, you know, at a, like a, either a subsidized or, or just the fact that we built it, to allow small, really small businesses who are too big for home business, but not big enough to build a place, you know, where they come in and just so that we could create jobs here in the city and then, and cut down traffic, all the, all the good reasons for starting a business.
So flex space.
Yeah, it's kind of like a flex space, almost like, yeah, but almost like an economic development zone, what bigger cities would do, where they'd create an office, an office park, yeah, but we don't have to create an office park, but maybe just a strip or something, you know, like a strip mall or something like that.
Like you see in Lehigh, that's right over there, close to the freeway.
Yeah, encourages like a mom and pop shop to, or a home business to become a mom and pop shop, which will then go on to a bigger, you know, hopefully it's bigger, and I just wonder if that's something that, and the reason I bring this is, Orem, for example, with WordPerfect, which is a, you know, a long time ago, that it's kinda, that's not exactly what they did, but what they, what the city did do was they said, okay, if you give us all the software, if you provide us with the software for almost free, they will give you free space, and that's, so the, so the company became a billion dollar company without having to borrow any money, you know, because the city helped them with a tit for tat type of thing, and I thought, okay, that's not necessarily the example that we take, maybe it'd be just like an economic development zone, but it's a really small one, befitting our size, but it helps mom, it helps these home office, home businesses become a mom and pop shop within our own city, without having to go all the way to Orem or Lehigh or someplace for open spaces. I was wondering if that's something that we could think about, you know, is that, is that the.
Do it, you know, something that's a program. That program, all assistance from, like, businesses from like, that they're in, Salt Lake City's five years ago. Population, probably took more than too long.
Well, I'm thinking it's getting to that point, you know, where.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a part of, you know, he has aggressive economic development like that, or obsessed and. That would be up to people.
But a challenge here, cause there aren't empty storefronts to fill.
Well, exactly, and I know my mom, or, my wife knows a lot of people who have started their businesses at home, which is, which is fine, but then they're, they're at the point now, because of traffic and all these other things that we always have a problem with in the neighborhoods, where they wanna go somewhere bigger, but they don't want to go far, because the whole reason they started at home was because they have kids and things like that, so if they could only travel maybe just 10, 10 miles, it's much better than, you know, but again, they need a smaller space, maybe even shared for some things, cause all they really need to do is all the UPS type of, coming in and out type of thing.
I think, I think you're talking about two different kinds of zones.
I might be, yeah.
One kind of zone is called flex, and that's where you have, you have a business where it's, the nature of that business is that traffic is secondary to the nature of the business, so you're not gonna want a lot of people coming in and out of this place. They're operating it from their office and they're storing their product in the warehouse, that's one different zone, and I've seen that's called research and development, R and D, so that's, that's a different kind of, kinda like a business park, but then there's, the other one you're talking about with your wife, that would be more like a retail space where you have storefront, and where traffic is the nature, the primary nature of the business, right?
See, so.
So those, you create those zones.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm thinking more of the second, because I thought that could tie in with our mixed waterfront use type of thing, where it's really hard to bring developer, or, you know, developers to build that, so what if the city provided, had a kind of like a little push, a catalyst, where we actually build the buildings smaller, but then, and then maybe at a, at a very competitive rate, and then it brings a lot of the mom and pop, mom and pop folks in the city to there in order to, you know, generate that interest and, and traffic to the, to the mixed waterfront. I just wonder if that's kind of a thing that we could think about, you know, in the next, you know, three or five years.
Did we keep neighborhood commercial, the neighborhood commercial zone down in the south end of, is this something that we could encourage in that zone, I mean?
Well, I have, at one of the APA conferences I went to years ago, in Atlanta, they took us out and showed us what they called an incubator.
Or a co-working space.
And I believe that Eagle Mountain actually had one, I don't know if it's still in effect or not, but what it is, is for a business that is, like you say, it just needs a little help to get started, and a lot of times it's offices, especially with our tech now, and they may have five, six, seven offices with one secretary, one copying machine, one this, so they're not spending so much on their equipment, and that gives them the foothold that they need. The commercial part is an interesting one.
Yeah, there are lots of really creative things that people are doing out there with, with economic development and trying to create different forms of working spaces and retail spaces, cause everything's changing so fast now, and, you know, people are, there's a move for like common kitchen space for people who are trying to do, whether it's candy or baked goods, and, you know, it's kind of an incubator kitchen space that people can come and use, and Salt Lake City is talking about doing that as well specifically, but yeah, there are, and there are these innovation districts where a developer will come in and kinda plan a whole campus around like central eating places, and then it has various different kinds of uses, and there's an awful lot of creative stuff going on. Again, it's kind of a function of probably size and demand and priority, and it's something that the council would definitely have to prioritize, that they really wanna move forward encouraging small businesses and come up with some economic development strategies, but there's lots of different creative things you can do.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for my wife, she was just the catalyst for my thinking this, but, but I'm just thinking that if, you know, if something maybe three to five years down the road, cause one thing is, I think we have to be careful that if we don't do something, then Lehigh will take everything, cause Lehigh's hit critical mass and, and they're, they're exploding everywhere, and Eagle Mountain, bless their heart, but they're And Eagle Mountain, bless their heart, but they're in the middle of nowhere, at the edge of nowhere. And so our city is perfect, because we could draw from Eagle Mountain, from ourselves, as well as all the little other towns north and south of us. But when we, you know, look to developers to build that kind of really neat walkable community or walkable area around... along the waterfront, they won't... they don't want to. They're not just gonna build a bunch of... a row of office, or, you know, a row of space and hope that someone's gonna fill it when... And we're just... all we did was contribute the zone to it, you know, that's it. So it'd be great if maybe we start thinking about something like that, maybe for the next three year... you know, in three years or five years, just so that Lehigh doesn't sap all of our creativity, and that we can sap Eagle Mountains, as well as their houses around, and then use our waterfront for that, because we do have a problem with the waterfront. We want that kind of walkable, nice kind of, you know, like in the pictures in the plan, but how do you get that? Other cities have done it, because that used to be where the water used to be a transportation corridor. And then there were warehouses and other things, which the city didn't know what to do, was blight, and then luckily, they were able to, you know, transform it. But we're not gonna have that unless we force that to happen, because no one needs the river anymore for transportation, or, you know, moving goods back and forth and things like that. So that's why I thought, is that something that we can maybe do, and that would become one of the things that makes us different, in that we attract those kinds of smaller... I'm not saying that we even have to help them out, just give them a space that's market... that's competitive as far as cost. If the city, say, contracts with an office supplier, then they... then the tenant can maybe get office, like, copy machines and those kinds of things cheaper, just because we were able to use our mass, you know, larger volume to negotiate with the contractor, instead of having to each tenant negotiate themselves, so maybe saves them a few dollars a month. You know, things like that, where the city helps that, but doesn't necessarily have to provide any taxpayer money towards it, other than maybe initially promoting the building of the... The construction of the buildings. So anyway, that's... since you asked for ideas, that was something I thought that maybe we... I don't know how we look at it, but maybe that's something that we, you know, we think about. But I like the idea of like an economic development or incentive, you know, or whatever, creativity zone or whatever.
Maybe we could encourage Oakwood Homes, because they have... they've touted the fact that they've started a school for construction workers, and maybe, you know... The only thing that if we brought it up to them, and they said, "What's the worst they can say?" It's, "No." But we just might get a yes.
It's a lot of riverfront there, so...
It's a lot. And then, you know, I ask them, and I don't know whether they'll do it or not, is to look at the one area where they could provide some jobs. And maybe that would be part of that. I mean, they've got several areas that they could work something like that in. But we'll have to ask what we will get.
So Nora, could you send an email out to the planning commissioners, asking them to brainstorm on some things that they'd like to see in 2018 as far as planning? And then we can come in in our next meeting. I know we're slammed in the next meeting.
Yeah.
But maybe we can off... we can provide some of our responses, and you did that. You feel good about that, huh?
A lot of it's my stuff, so I have to do it. You know, I have to write staff reports and everything.
All right. But at least give us... that'll give everybody else a chance to bring forward their thoughts. All right. Without objection, we adjourn.
And have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And a Happy New Year.
New Year, Happy Hanukkah, everything.
Do you know I've never seen a Star Wars movie?
Me either. I don't get anything of it.
There are two of us over here that...
Not a sunny one.